Good evening fellow commissioners, staff, people in the audience, people here at home. I welcome everyone to the November seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen city commission meeting, and at this time we'll call the meeting to order. Don't think our minister's here tonight, so if everybody will bow their heads, say a prayer for us. God be with us here tonight as we make decisions that affect every citizen in our community. Help us to remember we represent the young and the old, the rich and the poor, the healthy and the disabled. Help us listen to our fellow citizens and do our best for our community. We do appreciate the blessings you have bestowed on El Dorado. Help us work together on our challenges that are before us in the future. Help us to be fair and honest in our dealings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's our honor that we have Ms. Schum's third grade class from Grandview Elementary's here to help us this evening.
My name's Ty, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is the sports program.
My name is Connor. I'm eight years old, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is the pool.
My name is Emma, and my favorite thing is to ride my bike.
My name is Jack. I am nine. My favorite thing about El Dorado is First Baptist Church.
I am Quinlan. I am eight, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is Grandview.
My name is Trinity, and I am eight years old, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is restaurants.
My name is Emmy, and I am eight years old, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is the library.
My name is Taylor, and I am eight years old, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is the city pool.
My name is Izzy, and my favorite thing about Kansas is the First Baptist Church.
Great job. Okay, please turn around.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schum.
Okay, this is an exciting thing during the year. The next thing on the agenda is the Employee Service Awards. So we'll turn this over to staff.
We actually have several service awards. The first one, and we'll have department heads actually hand them the awards, and I think you, are you gonna talk? Sure.
Mayor and Commissioners, the first award we have tonight is for Sarah Hagan. Sarah, if you'd come on up. And Sarah has been with the City of El Dorado for ten years. She is our code enforcement officer, so she works very professionally and diligently in keeping the community looking nice and making sure the citizens understand our municipal code, follow it, and enforces those codes. And we really appreciate Sarah's service over the last ten years. So, thank you, Sarah.
Congratulations.
And I have the next one as well. Amanda has been with the City of El Dorado for fifteen years, and Amanda serves in her capacity in the engineering department. She pretty much runs the front side of that office day to day, keeps track of all of us, project accounting permits for any construction that goes on in town, and Amanda is another great asset for our community. We're all very fortunate to have her with us. So, congratulations.
Congratulations. Commissioners, we're here this evening, the fire department is. The fire department runs a very lean operation. We have seventeen paid members. We have up to twenty volunteer reserves, and then we also use student residents out at Butler Community College. We're here this evening to honor three of our three special volunteer reserves. And if I could have John and David come up, I'm gonna recognize John and David brothers. I'd like to recognize these two gentlemen. They have twenty-five years of service, and the reason I wanted to recognize them together is because kind of the history of when they started. They started in the spring of nineteen eighty-nine as reserves with the Department of Public Safety. The wife of one of the staff told John he needed to join, and so he told brother Dave, what'd you tell him?
I would if he would.
I would if he would. And the rest is history. Twenty-five years later, here we stand. Firefighter one, firefighter two, hazmat awareness, KU burn traders, interior, exterior, the list goes on. These two men have been to five major downtown fires over the years, and what Dave explained as too many calls to remember. Truly leaders of our department and leaders of the City of El Dorado. John works for O'Reilly Auto Parts as a manager, and Dave works for the state of Kansas. Gentlemen, as the fire chief, and on behalf of the City of El Dorado, thank you. If I could have Rodney come forward? This is Rodney Reed, and he's the who's who of firefighters. This gentleman started in nineteen ninety-four. Soon after, he got his firefighter one, and not long after that, he got his firefighter two. But he didn't stop there. He went to Mississippi to get his hazmat technician, which is a very difficult class. He went from there, he went to Pueblo, Colorado, and got his highway safety specialist training. He's received the Volunteer of the Year three times. He's a team leader for the organization, a squad driver. He was with Butler County Fire Rescue for twelve years. He's a member of the volunteer fire department, the list goes on. And he works for the City of El Dorado also, for public works. And in his spare time, he says he helps out with Flynn Hills Fire Rescue. Quite an accomplished firefighter in any walk of the life, and very much appreciated. And Rodney, on behalf of the City of El Dorado, thank you for your years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, I think we're ready for the next item on the agenda, which we have no proclamations at this point in time, so we are headed into personal appearance. We have with us this evening Linda Jolly with El Dorado Inc. on targeted businesses report.
Mayor, I think either two meetings ago, you were talking about, have we looked internally to see what businesses we would think would be good at, what businesses we want? I think I told you then, I thought Inc. had done that work or started that work, and so invited Linda here to tell you about the work that's going on.
Good evening, Linda Jolly with El Dorado Inc. And in late two thousand and twelve, El Dorado Inc. started the effort to look at businesses that we would have potential to target in the future. It started with a survey of the board of directors, was then followed by discussion of the outcome of that survey at our annual retreat that year. Beginning the first part of January twenty thirteen, we then started taking a look at the identified strengths and resources that the community, that our board felt the community had, to meet the needs of the businesses that we were hoping to target. And then in turn, we started having coffees with existing businesses, retired business people throughout the community, to see if they saw the strengths and the opportunities that El Dorado had to offer as the same as what we did, and also did they identify any weaknesses that maybe we overlooked because you do this day in, day out. So with that said, it's interesting when you look at ranking of industries for the community. And I find it interesting also that the way the ranking turns out follows a lot of the strengths that we have and didn't show as strong a support for businesses that maybe we can't support. But leading in the ranking of business clusters was petrochemical companies, thinking that we've had a long-term success with these types of companies. And I think one of the comments that was made in the surveys is interesting because it said, although we should look to diversify beyond the hydrocarbon industries, don't discount their continued importance. In the nineteen seventies, everyone said that oil was a dying business. Forty years later, it continues to be by far the largest industry in the world, and those who stayed in that business have benefited tremendously. When you go beyond just looking at the ranking of the businesses, the number-one selection by the most people was really warehousing and intermodal, rail and truck, thinking that because we still have rail service by two different rail companies to El Dorado, as well as great transportation here, that intermodal warehousing-type businesses would be a good fit for our community. Years ago, companies were swayed to come to communities sometimes because they own certain public utilities, electric would be one of them, and companies felt like they were getting, you know, lower electric rates. And you see a couple of Kansas communities that have been very successful because they had that utility. We always hear about location, but when you really come down to it, whether it's the incentives you offer, the companies have the bottom line of discovering what their cost to build in a community is, but they're today a lot more in tune with what their future costs are gonna be for transportation. And we've seen in the last two years that rail transportation is becoming even more popular, to be close to highways that they can get places in and out and get places fast. Trained workforce is another, skilled and trained workforce is another reoccurring cost. So utilities used to kind of be the top thing, and I'm saying ten, fifteen years ago, maybe even farther back, but today, although the utility cost is one of their concerns, more often than not, you'll see this transportation piece come forward as one of the main determining factors with the personnel training opportunities being second. So in our ranking, we had the petrochemical group or cluster, warehousing, intermodal, rail, or truck. The group was very interested in El Dorado looking in the future at the opportunity for composites, for either medical devices or aircraft production. We know that historically, we have not been in the aircraft production cycle like a lot of the communities around El Dorado, but they did feel like this was an opportunity for us. And then natural gas and businesses that surrounded that, either from, and they had refining, but I know in some of the comments, it said they believe natural gas is a piece of our future and that we should be looking to natural gas vehicles, which of course you guys have done. In the second tier, we had alternative energy, high-tech businesses, which we would all like to have. The question is, do we have the proper infrastructure today to recruit those businesses? And then heavy manufacturing. And although heavy manufacturing was number eight on the list, there was a group of people that felt like that scored higher in the top five things, but overall ranking, it ended up number eight. And then in the bottom tier of clusters, we had the beverage alcohol production and bottling, food canning type companies and meat processing, with some comments that said they didn't really feel like that was a sector that fit our community, as well as some of the others. When we went to identify strengths and resources, of course, plentiful water supply came up first in the boards' analysis, and that seemed to be well-confirmed with the industry and the business people that we talked to. Close proximity to Wichita ends up being considered a big advantage because if you can't find something here, it's quick to get there, transportation and so forth. Something that's becoming more and more valuable to us is available ground. The Hundred Acre Track and the West Industrial Park is a larger parcel that not very many communities in the area have to offer any longer. And one of our major competitors has just filled theirs, so we should be coming up at the top of the list as one of the places that has larger tracks. I'm not saying there hasn't been development in the smaller track areas in some of the communities, but large tracks with potential for rail access is what we're seeing with a lot of the things that come out. Good vehicle and rail transportation, turnpike and highway access, a growth-friendly community, a labor pool of good, trainable people with workforce training opportunities and educational partnerships, a rich history of recent successes in spite of a downturn in the economy. Quality of life with cooperation between entities, amenities such as YMCA were noted, and self-reliable energy at reasonable cost, community banks that are willing to work together, and quality healthcare facility was the last thing on the list that was identified. So, questions you might have?
What?
So as you mentioned, high-tech, you said that there's...
I think the ranking on high-tech falls where it does because they don't feel like we have the infrastructure to support it today.
What would...
In place. And we've had challenges, honestly, with some of our industries that have come and the challenge that they've had to get reliable service, you know, in the internet area.
And what it is, is there's no internet north of the train tracks, or hasn't historically been, in the industrial park. And so I think BG ended up, we tried and tried to get it done, and actually, Scott, you probably actually know about it, don't you?
Yeah, and BG themselves had to run fiber in between their own facilities out there. The cost of that infrastructure is so much, and we struggle with, like the AT&amp;Ts wanting to invest in a community like El Dorado.
They just say the return isn't what they need to make the investment, so we have an industrial park that all of the people there that have the T1 service have had to put that in themselves. And we've even been approached, like by Pioneer Balloon, about secondary service. You know, they've got one service established, but if they go down, I mean, their warehousing comes out of there and they're down. So that is one of the reasons, I think, that that happened. Also in our business office park, I mean, there was some struggle just to get internet out there at the time.
Well, and we asked AT&amp;T to run the line, and they wanted to come from the college, and that was six hundred thousand dollars is what they wanted us to pay them to do that. You know, they just couldn't justify it.
So as we build out these plans for business parks and industrial parks, I mean, it's two thousand and fourteen, so the assumption would be as we plan out business parks and industrial parks, that there's gonna need to be, you know...
Fiber services.
A dial-up modem at least, right? I mean, something. We've gotta have technology there, and I guess I wanna make sure that we're not too short-sighted in talking about Hundred Acre Tracks that we have, or a lot that we have in the business park if we can't get internet to them.
Well, and the solution to those really now is there's fiber on the turnpike. So the quickest way to get fiber is to come off the turnpike.
So if we talk to Kansas Fiber Network about teeing off of their turnpike fiber?
We've talked to the turnpike, and again, years, several years ago, and it seemed to me like they had sixteen pair and had dibs on eight of them or something. Do you remember this? And so, and they needed one, but wanted to keep a bunch 'cause it's in the ground and it's theirs.
Things have changed with the turnpike here in the last year or so.
I can only assume that they'd wanna sell anything to that.
Yeah, I mean, I would like, there's a group called the Kansas Fiber Network that built out between Wichita and Pory, and then Kansas City, and...
And we've actually talked, the owner of that company is from Bueller.
Right.
And in fact, I think he's the mayor of Bueller. And we talked to him about service here, and again, while we were looking for more opportunities, more options for citizens of El Dorado. And so haven't talked to him lately, but we did talk to him. And I think when a service provider is not owned by, have lots of stockholders, they apparently can provide service for a lot less money than...
Right.
AT&amp;T and Cox.
I mean, I guess the reason I'm talking about that is everything that you listed, not just high-tech, petrochemical, warehousing, natural gas, I mean, everything today is dependent on those connections. So, I mean, if that's a roadblock, or if that's been a big challenge, you know, in our recruitability to some of these spots, to some of this land that we have, then maybe it's something that we need to better understand, see if we can address it.
And I think part of, part of that conversation, I think, will be when we have our own ability to hit off our own towers. And so as Linda says, Pioneer and BG want backup, it may be that we'll let them come on ours if they have a failure.
I also think that another consideration is we have rail, but the access to rail, and although we've talked about, doesn't make sense to build a spur that needs to be reconfigured later for someone, but to just have the work done so the ability to extend to them would happen quickly. Our Hundred Acre Parcel that's out west, Union Pacific is wanting to back into that parcel, which is gonna take them across the road. And of course, we haven't done any work to get easements or things like that in place. So I don't know that we would have to actually build rail up front, but we probably need to do a little bit to provide for it. Also, our developer that has purchased four hundred and forty acres has that same challenge of determining just how rail will get to the parcels so they would be able to sell them.
My thought kinda is, and this might sound a little out there, but how creative we're getting with some potential folks we could bring to town? I was reading a trade article over the weekend, and it was talking about these sound stages that are popping up in random small communities throughout the country where, you know, production companies are rolling in for temporary times, off and on to do commercial spots, music videos, those kinds of things, but how it boosts the local economy in a different way. But they were also mentioning like the potential need to possibly see something like that centrally located between like New York and LA, like a meeting point, somewhere where crews could roll through, use it as needed. They're here for a week, two weeks, couple days, and they just keep it booked, but it has the accessibility, being possibly centrally located in the country, but then also, I mean, we're thirty minutes from Jabara, if that. I mean, that's a, and I mean, I don't, that's, I'm not saying we're gonna have a sound stage coming to town, but I mean, something like that, that's just, that there's people looking for the right home. I mean, to me, a lot of these things that we list, which are all things that we have to go after, are probably things that everyone's competing for, or a lot of people, I would assume.
But I think that if you think about what's open since I've been here, it's all been about relationships. And so I think as we were talking about, that brought Linda here, you know, it's, isn't Shane's brother a director or something?
He's a producer and director.
So I mean, he, Shane needs to get his brother to, hey, let's do the next series of Star Wars in El Dorado.
On the planes.
Right. Or whatever it is that he's doing, and so...
'Cause I mean, I just, I get the feeling that every, I mean, I know everyone's ready to welcome in people that wanna bring business to town, you know, if it makes sense for our community, and I think we'd be willing to, you know, I don't wanna say bend over backwards to do whatever, but we certainly do what we could to make it work if it made sense.
But I think to your point, you know, you're right, the list, while everything on the list are great industries, and we wanna retain the ones that we have and continue to recruit new ones, they're the same industries that, I mean, I don't think that that list is probably different for any other town our size than what they'd like to bring to their town, I mean, in this region. Right? I mean, everyone's looking at...
Probably, but I mean, I think that, you know, I think our, the perception of the oil industry to attitudes in El Dorado, if you listen to Jim, were unique. And I think here, everyone gets it, everyone's been affected by it, and everyone knows you can work around it safely if you pay attention to detail. And so, I mean, tonight, Ms. Gomez said that one of the things they tell all their new employees out there is, we're not boiling ice cream out here. And so, you know, I mean, it's dangerous, but it can be handled safely. And so I think that that's our strength, you know, when New Orleans lost that refinery, the town said, don't build back. You know, we don't, we don't want you here. And so that's not the perception in El Dorado.
Right. But I think to Chase's point, though, I mean, that's all, I absolutely agree with you that we're really geared towards that type of industry, but that's also kind of inside the box, you know, what kind of outside the box recruiting can we do to... But that's also kind of inside the box, you know, what, what kind of outside the box recruiting can we do to, to? I mean, how, what's our process for recruiting, I think is the question.
And I think our future is, is more value-added petroleum. And I can see that's your inroad into high-tech is in the petroleum industry because it's not what it used to be. But again, to Chase's out, outside the box, I think it's absolutely, the people that have lived here and left here have a connection here. And have the ability to do whatever they want, wherever they want.
'Cause I, I spent, the other week when I was gone, I was in, I think it was Cent- Centreville, Virginia, which is about an hour outside of DC, and they're a tech community. And I talked to a gal there and she was saying, I can't remember which tech company it was, but they said, once they got that one, everyone came. And it just became a tech town. They just needed that one anchor and it was like the rest of them.
And that happens...
Then you gotta have the, then you gotta get the techs, the employees to come.
Yeah.
And so, so you gotta think about that and what that looks like.
One of the comments you're hearing here is relationships. And that was one of the questions that we ask the people in the breakfast meetings. Um, if you had a friend or if you had a business associate that was considering a new business, would you recommend El Dorado? And if so, why or why not? You know, a lot of people have relationships. And the thing, the point that I wanna bring up about that is for us to work with companies that are currently within the state of Kansas, that company has to come to us. And so, if you've got someone that approaches you about, uh, El Dorado, you know, we need them to come to us so we can go through the proper procedure to do that. Because oftentimes, we're gonna get companies because of the relationship that they've established here, either with friends, family, or the city as a whole. Um, I think a very good example, we all know, is that BG did encourage Barton to look at El Dorado based on the experiences they were having here, and they felt like that was very positive. So, um, I, I just think awareness, just like your idea for the soundstage, we should investigate that. It is something different than we've looked at. What do they need? Do we have what they need to be successful here? And in all cases of all industries, if we have the components that'll make them successful, then we have a good chance of getting them to come here. 'Cause I think our compute, co- community and working with the city is, uh, user-friendly, in user-friendly mode. It's just the idea that, you know, identifying those companies, knowing that we have, don't waste their time. Know that we have what they want or need and go forward from there.
And I mean, I mean, I don't know what else could be similar to something like the soundstage situation or scenario. I mean, I'm all for jobs, good jobs coming to town. But what's so bad about finding something where people can roll through town? I mean, almost like crews coming through, like when the turnaround happened. You know, the restaurants were full, business, small businesses had an opportunity to get ahead, I felt like. And maybe if we had something in town where people were constantly kinda coming through, whether they were, that would maybe give small businesses more of an incentive to try taking a shot and having a better chance at succeeding. I don't know. But I just feel like there's creative, random things out there that we can maybe, and I, and I understand relationships and getting, I just think it's important for people to know that we're all willing to, I mean, meet them halfway. If it, if it makes sense and it's a good thing, um, or at least have a good conversation about it. If someone has an idea or has a relationship, I think welcoming that is important.
If we, and, and you've, you've mentioned that before, and I understand that for, I mean, because of state regulations, you can't actively recruit companies.
It's not a regulation, it's the, their eligibility for state incentives.
Okay.
We could go after companies, but if we bring them here, we can't rely on state incentives to be available to them.
For cit- for state?
For state, 'cause we've...
But we've never really recruited in state.
No, not in state. Well, a good example is BG coming here from Wichita. The process is they make the contact. We inform Wichita that they have come to us and expressed an interest in seeing properties and things here. The state feels like when you've made that proper notification, then in turn, that's given the host community the opportunity to talk to that business first. If they talk to them and the company still says, we wanna go, that's fine. Then they will be eligible for state incentives. But we had a community trying to recruit our businesses as their plan not very long ago. And the first thing I hear about the comp, from the company or anyone, is that they're wanting me to sign a non-compete letter for the company so that they can move to the other community and they can give them incentives. And I said, not until we talk to the company and we exhaust our ability to serve their needs. Well, they didn't ever move and so...
So, how active, if, I mean, if we, in order to secure those state incentives, if we're not, you know, recruiting inside of Kansas, how active are we in the recruiting at trade shows in our surrounding states? Or, or elsewhere in the other forty-eight states?
To a limited degree, uh, we have been attending Kansas, uh, one a year. We joined the, the Kansas Department of Commerce group that is, um, recruiting throughout the nation. And the state has recruiters, uh, that cover territories throughout the US. And so, periodically, we do go on those site visits and meet with companies in those areas, meet with those site recruiters. Um, and so, this next year, I think I'm slated to go to Chicago in the early part of the year for one of those events. But it's costly and we've not done as many of them as we potentially could. Um, our office did assist, uh, with a brochure recently where Butler, some, Butler, Reno and Harvey Counties, uh, went to the Kansas City area and met with, um, prospective recruiters, uh, actual site selectors for companies. So, it's all a matter of the amount of time and money you want to dedicate to those efforts. I mean, we can definitely do that more than we do today.
My last quick question is, what are we doing for kinda targeting and trying to get in some small business? Another one of my random, the sixty-minute special they did on Marfa, Texas, which is that kind of art, little, little community that's in the middle of nowhere, I believe, in Texas. I mean, it's not connected to a larger city. But they somehow got one successful artist in, and then a few came in. And then their kinda downtown district became a little bit of a, known for its legit, I mean, it's art. And it became quite the tourism, I mean, big tourism. It, and it was real interesting special, but I don't know if we can kind of find a niche with that a little bit or, I don't know. Or if we're doing anything really specifically.
You know, El Dorado does have a designation as, as a city of the arts. And we do have and have had historically, a lot of art-related businesses, or several art-related businesses in our downtown area. Um, I think that type of business is a lot different than, um, when you talk to me about retail service businesses. Because really, the, if you'll notice, uh, a franchise comes when they want to come. They look at, um, a critical mass of people that can buy from them. They understand the, the buying habits of those people and they make decisions accordingly. Um, I know we have recently been meeting with Main Street, uh, which has taken the lead on this, uh, with the Chamber also, on opportunities to cultivate that small business, which it might be a business that goes from home base to a small storefront, onto a larger storefront, or a startup business. And you'll see programs around, uh, that I hope that we will use some resources that are out there and maybe emulate those kind of projects. The thing you want to keep in mind though, is that we wanna start businesses that have the opportunity to be successful. And so, sometimes that takes some turn-downs of certain types of businesses that either don't have the skill set or the financial ability or something to get started. They may be a good idea, it just might not be a good idea for that person. And so, if we're gonna use resources to start the small downtown businesses, we need to step up and do a little more work with them up front before we put them in a situation of starting up and they turn around and fail. And I think a very good example of some of that is Sedan, Kansas. You had Bill Curtis, who was a, um, it's, it's not radio. He's a television personality that did those investigative reports. And he bought some ground outside of Sedan, Kansas. And then he bought most of the downtown area of Sedan. And he rehabbed buildings. And one of the lessons that he learned was he could rehab a building and he was saying, if you'll start a business here, you can have free rent for a year or whatever term. And he learned quickly that he couldn't give that building away with free rent, that those businesses didn't work. But maybe if he said, you can have free rent the first three months and then you pay twenty-five percent rent and so forth, that it instilled in the people, um, an ability to manage better, to understand that they had rents coming and so forth. And I think that they've started to be more successful in the businesses that they've been able to create and retain. So, it's, uh, it's been an interesting project to watch. And it, it sparked other development in the community. And, um, so I think things, just like your Texas example or, um, Sedan or other communities, I mean, there, there's a way to go about that. And hopefully, this new project that, uh, we'll come forward with in the future will have the components that it needs to help encourage those small businesses to get started. We're working on it. It's a work in progress.
So, I, back to a question that I, that, about the trade shows. So, you go once a year to trade shows?
I've been going once a year. We can, we can go more. We just need to invest more to do it. And we could do follow-up visits, you know, from those trade shows too. We could go back to the same area, just not with the group and make calls. And, um, a community that did that very, um, intensively, uh, in the last fifteen years was Hutchinson. They had someone on board that traveled the majority of the year, meeting with consultants all over the country and trying to, um, encourage them to come to Hutchinson. And I'm thinking it was a five million dollar commitment over a five-year period of time is what they raised to be able to do that and have the incentives and staffing and so forth. You could do it on a much smaller, uh, level if you wanted to.
Linda, would you say that we do above average for a town our size in trying in economic development?
Well, I definitely think you've stepped up to the plate for a community your size just by having the relationship you've had for twenty-five years with El Dorado Inc.
Yeah.
So, um, unlike communities that are smaller or larger in the area, you have dedicated, um, you have dedicated funds and staffing. I mean, we don't have the war chest that an Emporia has that has dedicated some sales tax money directly that accumulates. But I think for a community our size, that we've, we've been very, um, progressive and have the ability to work with clients on an ongoing basis.
How many available commercial lots do we have in town? You know, out in the industrial park?
Well, you've got, uh, about twenty acres in your business office park and another seventy-four acres total in the industrial side of that. And we've got a little under thirty acres in the existing, the first two were in the business office park area that's out west of town. And then you've got a little under thirty acres available, uh, maybe only twenty-three in the industrial park, the old El Dorado Industrial Park. You have ground, uh, along Sixth Street. And then we have the hundred acre parcel that's out west of town.
If we went and looked at a map out there in the business park, how many lots would you say is there? 'Cause I know they got like a cul-de-sac that's been there.
Well, they're, they're all different sizes. We developed the front twenty-four acres with water sewer and streets.
Yeah.
Uh, it's all platted, uh, those front acres. And I can actually give you that, 'cause I did bring, just a second. This is the brochure for the initial twenty-four acres. You'll see the two parcels there that are sold on the front are not in yellow. And, um, so in the parcels that already have water sewer and streets, you've got six, ten, fifteen lots of varying sizes from a half acre to almost two acres. And then in the...
Who's Flint Hills on this?
They're in the industrial side, which is not on this map. And we have a separate brochure, uh, put together for it because the Flint Hills piece does not have, that sector is platted, but the water sewer and streets, water's closer today than it was in the past. But the actual extension to every lot is not there yet. And what we did, uh, on this Walnut Drive that you see, the lot four on the, uh, bottom side of Walnut Drive, the lot just next to that is the one Flint Hills Services occupies.
Have, have we ever picked up a business from out of state? 'Cause I know we've done a lot of going with the state of Kansas and that kinda thing. Have we ever, and I know you have to go and go, but we've never succeeded in that.
Businesses I worked with, a little over ten years ago, was Curbs Plus. And they were from out of state. I did visit their facilities there. Uh, we then engaged the representative from Department of Commerce and they met me there. So, we have actually gone out and, uh, in that case, we do have other business interests. We have a project we're working on right now that would be coming from, virtually be coming from out of state.
And then Valmont, that's Nebraska?
Uh, Valmont was, Valmont was early on and Valmont came out of the Nebraska areas where their home office is. They didn't have a Kansas presence at the time. Barton, of course, did have the Valley Center presence, but Barton is actually out of Des Moines. And we worked with the Des Moines, um, home office to develop that project.
Do you have any idea how many jobs is in the El Dorado area? I mean, I say in the area, I'd, I'd count the refinery in that even though they're not in El Dorado.
We can get that totaled for you.
That'd be kinda interesting compared to other cities because I've always thought when you look at the prison, you look at the refinery, there is a lot of jobs out there. The question is, where's the people live at and why don't they live in El Dorado?
We were just, uh, talking in a recent meeting about doing a business profile of our businesses that would ask them for total number of employment, um, potentially, how many of those, um, employed are in the six, seven oh four two area code? Compiling that on major businesses in the community.
But, but we did ask that. We asked, we've asked people, why you moved here, why you didn't move here? And, um, and we have those results. And the people that chose not to live here overwhelmingly, it's because there was no housing available. And so, if you're, if, let's say you're a teacher and you start August first and there's no housing for you in July... you find a house in Augusta and then your kids go to school in Augusta, you just come to El Dorado to teach. And so you find that over and over and over. And the next, maybe not the next one. The spec housing program was the co-opted program between the city and Inc. to make sure we had those houses, more of those houses being built. And so again, the demographic was three-bedroom, two houses, two garages.
Two baths.
Okay. And then, and so that's what the spec housing program is about. It's about trying to meet that so that when the jobs open, there's houses here to look at and a variety of homes in a price range that's defined as well. So I think that's your, that's your normal, that's what we've discovered in talking to people.
And that was overwhelmingly the response when we had, did the survey and had those conversations with new employees at the hospital, the prison and the refinery and the college, maybe the school.
It was not the prison. The actual focus groups were done in the, at the college, at the refinery and at Susan B. Allen. They were done by Wichita State. And then survey was done of USD 490.
And then we did it to the people that got the $5,000 incentive as well.
That prompted that.
So if you were, if you were a demographic in that program to kind of refresh it was if you made over $75,000 a year, was that the bottom?
I think that was the threshold.
And so if you, if your income was this and you bought a house in El Dorado with incentive with the $5,000 or something. And so we, we knew who all those people were. We did that for a bunch of new hires at the refinery. And but we ended up having different people get it. And we surveyed them and asked them, did you move here? Why not? And so we have all that information. But I think it was done several years ago.
We had 10, 10 $5,000 stipends that were available. And it went to multiple companies. We started that with the thought that Holly Frontier was moving people to the community and that we wanted them to try to live in town. We ended up having an individual from one of the banks, from Sherwin-Williams Store, a regional rep for them, some refinery, hospital, trying to think, Valmont Industries. All of those had people that ended up moving. So... The, and as I said, that work was done in that WSU study. Herb asked the question at the time, you know, what do you think the rate of error for this study would be? And WSU came back saying with the samplings that we'd taken, less than 8%. But overwhelmingly, the housing issue was the big thing.
And proximity to the lake wasn't.
Was not.
Wasn't a factor.
Which was an assumption that we had that didn't play out. So that's why it's good to take your thoughts, just like the strengths and resources in the community and talk to others outside about them, too.
Anything else?
I'd just say, I mean, I don't know what you need from us, but if you ever need someone as an elected official to go sit in a meeting to just talk to new prospects and just show them that we're eager and willing to welcome them to the community, if it makes sense, I mean, I'd be happy to do whatever. So just let us know what we can do on our end and hopefully we can keep going.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Linda, you might comment as far as the idea is somebody was to talk to us, like the BG kind of thing, where you have to notify Wichita. There's such competition between cities in Kansas, they don't want us robbing from each other, is that...
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's the reason for, that's how highly competitive this stuff is.
However, it is the will of the business.
Right.
So as I said, the, just like we want the opportunity to talk to businesses before they leave, to make sure there isn't something we've overlooked or could be doing to help them, we need to give that same consideration to other Kansas communities.
Thank you, Linda.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Linda, thank you.
Okay. Ready for agenda item number one, which is public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to come forward and have any comments?
James Powell, 323 West Carr. I come before you tonight to show my support for the neighborhood revitalization money that we're hoping to get. And I do so for the following reasons. I see that as a very large economic development tool for the city of El Dorado. We talk about infill. Well, infill will occur when we revitalize these neighborhoods. It will bring tax money into all the entities that are involved and are concerned about this. I think it's a great tool that this city can use if marketed properly. As I sat here and listened, I appreciate all the work El Dorado, Inc.'s done. I do have to disagree with the tax sector being so low. I myself have worked many trade shows throughout the country. The Hims IT Fest, which is the world's largest IT gathering for hospitals, was held a few years ago down in Atlanta. I was down there and I got to meet people from all over the world. Over 100,000 people came to that. And Linda's right, Hutchinson did hire somebody to do that. They were at that show. You know, if we want to be proactive about bringing businesses into our city, we have to be at these trade shows. We have to have a very strong presence. You know, I know Vegas would be a tough one for anyone to go to, but that's where the IT conventions are. That's where we're going to bring in these companies that are going to build in our office parks. They're going to build big buildings. We don't really have to worry about the people that they need to hire because they'll bring them with them. With that comes people filling in our much-needed housing. It's a huge opportunity that we're missing. We do have to think outside of the box. Is oil important? Yes, it is. It's incredibly vital to this city's survival. But we do need these other things. Chase, you're exactly right. You know, we have to think outside of this box. I personally know of one young gentleman from here in El Dorado that moved to Florida to chase his acting career. He does so at a university down there that has a soundstage. And a lot of people move down there just for that. You know, we have a beautiful downtown that could easily be a soundstage for about any commercial that wants to run. You know, my brother's brother-in-law is the one that makes all the Sonic commercials. They do that up in Alatha at a Sonic. Why can't we have that here? We need to go after that. That's big money coming into our town. So that's all I got. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, James.
Thanks, James.
Remind me, Alex Graves graduated El Dorado High School and he directs Game of Thrones. Not that Game of Thrones is coming to El Dorado, but there's a connection. That would be cool.
It would be real cool. He shot films there before.
Yeah, back, I mean, back when he was doing stuff with Mr. Peterson. But now he's, I think, pretty big HBO guy. But that would just be an interesting thought.
Can you thank her for the Artist Assistance Program, too?
I'd be. Should I start thinking? Well, I don't, I'm not that close with him, but he's got family in town.
Here we go.
It's about relationships.
The upcoming season.
Game of Thrones.
I'm not sure what part of that, what part of that we're gonna, well, the Flint Hills. That girl, the blonde girl's Daria's husband, first husband.
Listen to Herb, the Game of Thrones expert. This is awesome.
Was, lived, they lived in the grasslands and so, you know. Yes, I'm on, however many books are out, I am on the last one.
We're not going to go chasing soundstages, by the way.
Other than, other than I'm thinking...
Just a thought about outside the box.
People are going to be calling, maybe they could...
Kind of to your point, though, again, and I don't have a box. But when you're looking for those opportunities, I, last time I heard, I think that the new theater facilities for Butler was on the top of the build list. We're famous for this, that programming they have at Butler. I mean, people come from all over the United States to go to that program. Well, maybe they need a soundstage in their program so that besides going to Broadway, then they can go do a commercial next door on 32nd Street or something. And so, you know, don't limit it to a stage. We have one of those. Think about other opportunities that are correlated that could be developed and expanded. So that's why I think the tech side of petroleum. Petroleum's our base, but our future is a lot smaller.
Yeah.
And uses less power.
One comment I'd like to, before we get away, since we're thinking outside the box. Could we have Suzie come down from the chain? I'd be interested in our top five recruiting efforts of businesses that we'd like to have in our downtown, in our retail area. So that everybody knows that.
Because I even think it's interesting, I mean, I look at Oz Endurance and what they're doing. And they're slowly building. And that's a fad that's taken over the country.
But it's not, in my mind, if you look at the demographics of running, it's the reason that we want them.
Yeah, and I think the biggest thing...
The people that go on a triathlon, their demographic, their average income is $126,000 a year.
Yeah.
So is that the kind of person that you want to expose to your community? Absolutely, because then when they decide, I'm going to build a new hemostat manufacturing plant, I'm just going to put it in El Dorado so I can go do that Ironman once a year and run in the Flint Hills.
And like, and something with Oz, I think people's perception of that, who are familiar with Oz, think that they just put on races. When the majority of the company is timing races and going to other races that are in place around the country at a time. And so, you know, what can we do to help them build? Or I don't know, it just, people like that who have the work ethic and desire to grow and it's a unique thing to be in El Dorado.
The meeting that Jennifer and I had last week with the executive director of the Shrine Bowl said Oz timed a race in Topeka the weekend or two before. And she goes, I know that name. Why do I know? She goes, because they did that race I just did.
Yeah.
So...
Anyways, I could talk about this for a while, but I'll be quiet.
Let's head on to agenda item number two.
Sounds good.
Consent agenda, minutes of the last meeting. Anybody out of entertaining motion?
Mr. Mayor, move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second. Got a motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we are ready for agenda item number three. The Neighborhood Revitalization Program.
Yes, Mayor, we bring to you again this evening our draft Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. Just to discuss it and hopefully if you all are on the same page, we can go ahead and execute the plan and continue discussions with the other taxing entities. Just a little recap of what's in our, the criteria in the outline of our plan. What we're proposing is all real property is eligible, including residential and commercial properties anywhere within the city of El Dorado. So first off, residential properties that were improvements on real property constructed before 1970 and located within the city of El Dorado regardless of location shall be eligible for a 10-year tax rebate. So that's any property, residential property in town that was constructed prior to 1970. All new residential property being constructed on a vacant lot that was previously developed or requires demolition and is considered infill would be eligible for a 10-year rebate up to a maximum of $175,000. And any new residential property located in a subdivision that's not at capacity within the city of El Dorado should be eligible for a five-year rebate up to $175,000. The first two would, we're proposing would run from January 1st of 2015 through December 31st of 2019. The new residential construction and subdivisions would only run for one year and then set to expire without further action. Non-residential property must meet a couple sections of our plan. Specifically, we're looking at targeting condemned properties, properties that are in blighted neighborhoods, blighted areas, or properties that are eligible for grant programs that are qualified by the city of El Dorado. And also to meet eligibility for non-residential property, the building would have to be at least 25 years or older, be considered a dilapidated structure and is determined to be a health or safety issue. The other taxing entities have been sent out as of what is currently in front of you, the draft plan. Linda and myself were able to meet with the trustee board last week and discuss our draft plan with them. They did have some reservations with the new residential construction and new subdivisions. And they also had some reservations with no cap on non-residential, no ceiling as far as improvement dollar amount. I shared with them my thoughts on it, that I believe the city has well-vetted this program over a number of years and looking at what we need. We just hear this discussions tonight about the shortfall of residential housing we have as one. And then two with the non-residential, it's how we get the best and highest use for a parcel of land or rehabilitating an existing structure to make it something new, a different use. So the process, if this is passed tonight, we would then go on to meet with the college trustees again, USD 490, USD 375 and the county for ask them to enter in our local agreement with the city of El Dorado.
So how did the conversation go with the college and with 490, the conversations you've had?
With the college, unfortunately, we thought the meeting was, all the questions had been answered and Linda and myself excused ourselves, thought they were moving on to the next agenda item. From what we understand, they had some further discussion. It seems to me, from talking to the President Kroll, there was a concern from the majority of the trustees about passing a plan that had new residential housing and subdivisions. They had, from what she shared with me, no concerns at all about infill housing or rehabilitating existing housing that was constructed prior to 1970. They did have some reservations with no cap on non-residential projects. I'm trying to qualify that with non-residential. First off, like I talked, had to be condemnable property in a blighted area. And then, and then a project that would be eligible for tax rebate from the state of Kansas here regardless of if the city of El Dorado included them in their plan. a project that would be eligible for, um, tax rebate from the state of Kansas here regardless of if the city of El Dorado included them in their plan or not.
Scott, how long have, how many years has the city of El Dorado had this NRP program?
Since nineteen ninety-six.
Since ninety-six, and it's basically been unchanged from what it is?
We've added, we've added areas. The old plan had a detailed outlined area that was in the revitalization program. We've taken away those boundaries with this draft, this proposed plan in front of you.
But the, but even the defined area, it, while you had a defined area that included everything, outside of that area, if you were condemned or condemnable, you got the program as well, and so, while you, so, the change is now, if, it's all over town, that the part that used to be in downtown or really core and expand from there is now available around, all over town.
But a five-year rebate on new construction isn't new this year.
No, that, that, that was again, and kinda to the thinking outside the box, or is the city commission reacted to the stopping of residential construction, and, um, I think, I think Nick brought it up. Plumbers weren't working, painters weren't working, framers weren't working. All new housing stopped in El Dorado in two thousand nine, and so the commission reacted to that with this program that did it across town. And it was, so, and it was, it was a jobs bill is, I guess what I'd call it, um, wanted people to go back to work, and so that was the-
I guess my question, so, the two reservations that seems like the Juco board has are things that we haven't really changed. It's the un, the, the cap on the commercial, which we haven't changed, correct?
Yeah, we never did have a limit there.
On commercial?
And, and the one seventy-five was invented in oh-nine, so, the same time you put in the new subdivisions, you put a cap on the program. Before that, there wasn't a cap on that house, was it?
So in oh-nine, we did this, and hasn't this been an annual deal? We renew it every year?
About every three years, the whole plan itself. You, you looked at the new housing side of it, um, in two thousand nine, reviewed it again in two thousand ten, eleven, and now here in fourteen.
Okay.
And each time, we went to all of those taxing entities, and, and they signed off on the plan, each, each time we've made any re- um, changes or revisions to this plan, we've gone in front of all those boards and, and-
Have, have any of the other taxing entities you've visited with shown any of these same reservations that the Juco board has?
We haven't met with any of the other boards, or, um, just, just the administrators.
Okay.
There, there was thought that there might be some concern with the trustees and, and, and looking at, they had some difficulties with Benton's proposed plan and
Well, and I-
And so, we just thought we'd get in front of them and, and I thought it was-
I read that in the, in the Times Gazette, and it didn't, um, they didn't elab- I mean, the story didn't elaborate on it, just said that they discussed the um, the plan, I don't know what their plan is or what their discussion was. Julie, is that a fair question to ask you here? If you were, oh, you, you didn't cover that? Okay.
I think it was a different situation. I think they were just mailed Benton's and said, sign off on this.
Oh?
With no discussion, I think.
Okay.
So, they really are wanting to take their time and review it. I, I don't know their details at all of their plan, though.
Well, I, I guess I don't understand why they're reluctant. And, I mean, I'm not I don't have all the answers, but it just, um, I think it's been successful. We've, we have renewed it several times, and, and all the entities have always gone along with us, and now I don't understand what's changed. I'm not even, I don't even know for sure, you said a majority, I don't, how many trustees are on the college board? I don't either.
At least five, maybe seven.
I don't know.
We did show success in oh-nine when we implemented the new, new housing, um, portion. At, at the time, prior to that, we had three building permits for the year. We ended up with fifteen new homes built after we implemented that. That carried on into two thousand ten with fourteen new homes, and we saw a drop off again in eleven. We revised it, we revisited it, um, had five new homes in eleven, seven new homes in two thousand twelve, and only have had four new homes the last two years, so.
But our subdivisions have been
Full.
Full, so now we have two new subdivisions, and I think it's gonna be a shame if we can't do this and have all the entities participate. And I think we've been, especially with the junior college, I think we've been a very good partner with them over the last, especially the last few years. I mean, with our participation in, in the stadium and the fire education building and I understand, didn't we run, didn't we run some cable for them from their campus over to the new stadium? Didn't we do that for, at no cost?
I mean, I, I think historically, we've had a really good working partnership relationship with Butler, and, and you're right, Nick, that that's highlighted with some big projects in the last couple of years, with the fire sciences and with the stadium. Yeah, we ran fiber from the new stadium back to the college to save the project a substantial amount of money. But, you know, we've, we've had a bigger rela- a good relationship, I think a well-established relationship with Butler for a long time. I mean, we share facilities, they, you know, utilize our facilities for baseball and softball, and, and we work with them, and so, I mean, I, I guess I don't know, I don't know where this, why, why the sudden change on their side. I guess in, in their desire to work, work through this, so, or maybe there hasn't been, maybe we just need a further, further discussion with them.
And I think, I guess NRP in western Butler County at least has become political. I think, um, in the vein of, of, uh, the sales tax, like the sales tax vote in Wichita, the driver against that was incenting business development. And so, um, I think Rose Hill got rid of the NRP because they didn't want to incent development. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know if Augusta got rid of theirs, but, um, I, I think there is, there's some political will against incentives, and then, um, and I, and I understand that. That said, people drive our community, and that growth helps to spur its cost, so it's, you can have all of nothing, or five years down the road, you can have something of something.
Well, I was always, I was always told it was government one-on-one, that the best way to to de- to lower your taxes is to increase your tax base, and this looks like a good way, not the only way, but a good way to help do that, so like I say, I, I fail to see why there isn't more enthusiasm for it on the Juco board.
I, I'll be surprised, and it seemed like it's been a year, two years, three years ago, I was reading the paper, I think the county probably won't wanna jump at this quite as fast as you think they will. That's, time will tell, you know, when you go visit with them. So it, uh, it, it kinda comes down to-
It wouldn't surprise me if there's a no vote from the same city that's, was in the paper that doesn't wanna do it at the college. I could see that no vote from that.
I, uh, one of the things, when I was looking through this, I was gonna ask, you know, how many new projects we had, and that kinda told me that this curve has kinda went down on us here. And sometimes when you give, 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 you just, you kinda lose the, like it's owed to me, you know, kinda thing, and I know when I was reading this, somebody's gotta pay the tax, bottom line, and so we're giving this up in this process. And I really like the all areas of town part of it, and how we was trying to do, work with that part of it. When you look at, on this one, it talked about properties structured before nineteen seventy and located within the city limits, you know, uh, I'm, I'm afraid we're gonna miss a big old gap in there, or somebody that might be putting a nice room addition on, out in the northeast part of town that misses out on this. So.
They're not missing out on it.
They're not?
Nope. They're getting a five-year deal.
Okay.
So if, if-
That, you're right. They're getting five instead of ten?
Right.
Okay, I'm with you. So I, I'm just saying that as we give these incentives out, this has been given out since ninety-six and it's kinda fallen off, I still go back to hoping that we would have the outfit that did Hutch's survey on housing come visit with us, or what they did to start with. And I know that in oh-two, they did that, and then they come back in oh-seven or oh-nine and did it again, and I seen the oh-nine stuff. But if Hutch, you know, we was mentioning Hutch here on stuff here earlier today, it would be interesting to at least have that company come and say, what can you do for us to understand our housing stock in El Dorado? And they must've done a good project with that, or they wouldn't have had them back seven years later. Now, that's, that's my thought process. So I don't know what happened on the first time that they got them going, but I know I've seen the maps, like I've said over and over. I, I think that's kind of a first step. I wouldn't have, I'm kinda disappointed we're doing this for four years. We kinda started out, it was a two-year deal, or a three-year deal. And, uh, now, now, so why did we go longer with it now?
It's been a three-year deal, deal, and-
All along?
All along.
From the start?
You, you updated ninety-six, ninety-nine, two, and oh-five, and oh-nine.
Okay, three-year deals, okay.
And, and when you say it's fallen off, new home construction's what's fall- fallen off, the, the people reinvesting in the community, the people participating in the plan, the number of parcels in the program has just steadily increased. And you've got some major projects that are starting to pay property taxes on their reinvestment, which are huge, huge.
Absolutely.
But the new homes were falling off because we ran out of lots.
We ran out of lots to build on.
My, my thought was, I would like to visit with those guys, and instead of having a four-year, kinda shorten this up. Now, that's, cause we can reveal, I, you know, if this is what we wanna do, let's do it. I just don't wanna have it a length of time, because I'm thinking we might want to reconsider this whole program with something that they might come up that we haven't thought about.
And, and at any time, it can be revised. That was something I just put in there, thinking, once the new housing is done after a year, if we decide just to let that fall by the wayside, that we don't have planned areas anymore, so we're not adding new areas here or there. That, just let the program keep going and, and see what happens. Definitely could be revised or changed at any point.
It can be revised anytime, and we revised it July twentieth of oh-nine, January, actually, February of oh-nine, July of oh-nine, January of ten, September of eleven, so we can go back and revise.
And that's, and I mean, that's been your history since housing dropped. I mean, your, your housing was going up like the nation until oh-nine, and then there were none.
And what we're, what we're after here is, is a consistent plan, and, and something that the county would definitely appreciate, at least staff there. Is a consistent plan, and, and by carrying this out for four years and, and really not have any major changes or additions, that it, it, it's a lot easier administratively to, to follow this plan and implement it.
And you're also creating an environment for business that it knows how to operates in, and I guess there'd be some security in knowing that you can plan for four years rather than two, and so, if you, if you did this for two, in a year, you're gonna pop it back open, or eighteen months.
Well, in that period of time, we're gonna know what our new, uh, developments are doing. That's one thing that comes into that. And the other thing is that when you sit down and somebody's thinking about something-
And how does that impact it?
Well, I mean, if you go two years and we don't have the building going on out there that we thought after we've given them everything, you know, do we rethink our process for that, or do we, we address the problem at that time? Now, the, the other thing that I was thinking about was that as you look at this plan, you also, by doing the two-year deal, you're saying, you know, if you're thinking about doing something, you need to do this, cause this isn't a God-given right. And this, there is an end to this, and it kinda helps spur the activity than just thinking that you're gonna have this all the time, because in the real world, we would like to get to where we wouldn't have this. There's a lot of towns that don't have this. You know, a town our size, this is very unusual to have this product.
If you think, and that, if you compare us to Andover,
No, I'm talking-
Andover's, Andover gave away more than us, and they build two or three hundred houses a year, I think. So, i- i- your analogy, Andover is the one that shouldn't have this. Andover doesn't need this to get people to build houses.
I'm saying, when you look around Kansas, towns our size, I don't think have these kinda programs.
I wouldn't be surprised at, but it-
Does Newt- does Newton have it? Does Winfield have it?
Don't know that, but I'd be surprised if, I'd be surprised if they didn't, if they knew about it.
Yeah.
And, now, I'm not against the program, don't get me wrong, I just would like to shorten it up and be more flexible of where we go in the future. That's where I'm coming from.
The, the core of this, and, and at least our sole focus is reinvestment and rehabilitation of existing structures or infill, um, just to reinvest the community and, and, and get these neighborhoods fixed up, get new housing built on infill.
That's the four-year part, right?
That's, yeah, that's a major part of this, and that's our most, most of our customer.
This, this is where I'm coming in from too, guys, that if you take this whole block and you have a guy that comes in that's got a lot on there, that's got a decent house, and he wants to come in and really updo his, and use his program, you might have three-fourths of this lot that's got some really bad houses on it, and you've kinda, you know, where there's really a different plan that ought to be in place for that whole block versus just that one house. That's, I don't wanna spend a lot of money in something that we go back and wish we wouldn't have done down the road. Now, that's, that's one thing I've been a little concerned about when I read this.
But we're not spending anything.
Huh?
We're not spending anything, right?
No, I'm saying that somebody's gonna go out and spend some money on some housing, and we're going to us taxpayers are gonna help pay the process where they don't pay their fair share of taxes on the new property, right? On the new built. How would you describe what this plan's doing, or?
They're just rebating the difference in the, what the added value to their property, what they invested in the property.
And that's why I'm for this. So don't get me wrong, but we don't wanna encourage people that there might be a different plan down the road that would be better after we analyze this, saying that we just don't do everything.
My question is, are we, do we need to go ahead and, I know we've been talking about this, should we just go ahead and move on this tonight, or would it be to our benefit to follow up? You said that Butler, they had a conversation, you think, after you all left. Would it be beneficial if we tried to have another conversation?
Well, I, I think that if you did, I think you can do this tonight if you're ready. I think they're meeting again the ninth, is that right?
December.
Of December. I'd, I guess, encourage any- I'd, I guess, encourage you to go to talk to them.
I think we feel like you, you all should do what you think's in El Dorado's best interest.
I think we should act on it.
Okay.
And then, and then go talk to the, I mean, show, show our support of it and act on it, and then go talk to the other entities.
One, one thing that concerns me is that, and this is what we would, should help sell this thing on, is that right now, a person's paying taxes on that property, and when he makes this improvement, that's gonna be new taxes for them down the road at all four levels. So, why should we pay? 'Cause we've already spent a lot of money on sewer water, storm water, and then this on top of it. And they're not losing a penny in this process, other than promoting what it's gonna do for them down the road. So, that, that's what I'd be trying to sell them on, and why they should be doing this.
No, we get to.
Okay, so, if they don't wanna do that, I have a real problem in us spending, allowing them to get out of the program and make it as less effective by us being the only one, or four-ninety being the only one.
And I think.
And the other two, so, I, I just wanna rethink that process if we're not getting a full effect of what we're doing here.
Well, that's the state of Kansas. And so, um, if you can talk our state legislators into giving us that ability.
Well.
So, they can't.
I, I'm saying, why should we give the rebate for just the city of El Dorado if the other three entities are benefiting and we're the ones that's helping pay for this?
That, so, your only, your only option then is to not do the program?
Well, I, then, because they didn't wanna do the program. I, I don't think we'll be as effective if we're the only one doing the program.
I, I don't disagree with that, but I think we're even less effective if we don't do it at all. So, is it in the best interest to just go ahead and move forward, and then we make effort to go out? I mean, I'd be willing to go December ninth and.
Could, could we do a two-year versus a four-year? Then, that'd be part of us selling to them, that it's not a long-term commitment, it's a.
Well, Scott said we can amend it.
We can change it, we can change that, right? I'm not opposed to that, if we can.
I just.
I mean, if it could be changed.
And, and, and maybe it would be something good that, um, when engineering department gave its yearly presentation, we did a review of the NRP program. Number of parcels in it, new reinvestment in the community over the year. It's probably good information to get out there.
That would be probably. I'm not opposed to that. I think it's a good program, and I think, I mean, if we can change it or whenever we need to.
I think you can change your relationship with Butler, too.
I, I would hope that we could.
This is Butler saying,
So, if we do it for.
We only wanna be a, we wanna live on a one-way street, not a two-way street. And I understand that, too.
Yeah.
Well, and that's my que, if we, if we go back and make it a two-year, then are we gonna be right here again in two years, going and talking to all the entities again?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But that's, I mean.
Well, given two years, we hope that the developments take off. And if you guys can let me have this guy from Hutch come and talk to us, I'd be interested in that process. And, uh, see, see where we go. And I, 'cause I like the rehab project. The only thing I'd question that, too, I noticed that, uh, in section D, it talks about buildings twenty-five years or older meeting the dilapidated structure description as outlined in KSA. I don't know what that law says specifically. And determined by the city building inspector's office, shall be allowed to petition the city manager to be included in his program. So, do we have a petition or a application they make up for that? Have we had any applications on that, Herb, that come to your office in the last year or two?
I don't think we have in the last year or two, but I know, I know we have.
And, and the state statute definition of, um, dilapidated, um, blighted areas is, is lengthy. And the majority of them I can think of have been, um, residences that have been involved in fires. So, a great thing for us to get include those in the program. He had a fire and the home was valued at eighty thousand dollars, and they go through and rehab it and, and, uh, their new appraisal's ninety thousand, so.
And I think, I mean, and I think we've had. We've had, um, I've signed off on a couple of those where they had a fire and a builder acquired property, tore it down, built new on it. And so, that made it eligible.
And they didn't have to rebuild, so, you know, I'm with that, too. So, that's not a problem.
And so, that's how, yeah, no, that's how we've done it.
Could, could we have that, the wording of that, where it says reviewed by the, or, uh, the petition, the city manager including the program? What if we had Herb review it and make recommendations, and, and the city commission actually approves that?
The, the reason it came to me was because, and the reason it says what it does. In the history of El Dorado, no one, that we've never condemned a property because it was rundown. And so, this made it quit making it, it took it from being political to being professional. And so, I'm only in it because.
I like that better.
The, the commit, past commissions did not wanna see condemnations. And, um, and so, consequently, staff didn't ever do any.
I think if there's a desire to, to engage another consulting company and pay them to come check us out again, I think that's fine. I think that the right, we need to move forward with this, though. So, I'd like to make a motion, if you don't mind. I move to approve resolution number twenty-seven forty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Butler County Board of County Commissioners, Butler Community College Unified School District four-ninety, Unified School District three-seventy-five to extend the neighborhood revitalization program.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Two parts of that I don't like. One, I wish it was a two-year instead of a four-year. And two, I would like to have it worded to where somehow all four entities need to participate. And if they don't, I think we're spinning our wheels.
Well, I, I mean, I, I guess, in, in the spirit of discussion, I think if one entity, so, I'm, I'm not gonna single one out, but if one of the entities decides that it's not important to them to try to help El Dorado, I think it's our job as commissioners to still decide to do what we can to help El Dorado. And I think that this is an opportunity to do that. I mean, I, I don't disagree with you that it certainly takes some of the, you know, some of the thunder out of it if all the, if all the entities don't participate. I don't disagree with that. But I also think that we have an opportunity to step in and say, which we've done now since ninety-six or whenever you said that this started, to step in and say, we as, we as a city want to do what we can to, to revitalize our blighted neighborhoods, to spur more development in town, and, and to make El Dorado a better place to live.
This is an El Dorado program, and, and we should drive it.
We, we've been in this since nineteen ninety-six, and there's a tax out there, it has to be paid. And.
And it gets paid.
Well, and I, I just think that, um, there is people that would be building out there anyway without this program. So, you know, they get a free ride on the deal, which is the way the process goes. But, uh, I'm, I'm trying to be fair with the guy in town that's paid his taxes for forty years and continues to pay, and how we be fair to everyone.
Are you guys opposed to the two-year? I, I think that this resets itself next year. I don't know why we have to have a discussion about a two-year program.
Only part that's four, only part that's four-year is the, it's not the new construction part.
It's the part that's always been extended.
If you'll do the two-years, I'll vote for it. If we don't, I'm gonna pass on it.
I'm not opposed to the two-year situation, but I'm in favor of, regardless of all four are on board or not, I think we need to continue to do it, so I agree with you on that. Is that ended discussion?
Yeah, ended discussion. Nick, anything else you wanna throw into it?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Motion carries three to one. Okay, we're ready for agenda item number four, discussion regarding spec housing program.
Yes, this, we brought this to you, um, two weeks ago and told you about the, what's going on with Inc. and their board and their voting to, um, increase the spec housing program. Uh, the, uh, you'd asked to table it for a couple, couple weeks and bring it back in two weeks, so this is that. Again, that program, if, uh, actually, Lynda, you can probably explain it correctly. I just know we kinda guarantee some of the interest on a spec house that meets certain criteria.
Uh, homes that meet a certain criteria, which are basically three-bedroom, two-bath. There's some other, uh, things along with that. But the builder normally would build his home and price it and anticipate sale within six months. And we're trying to encourage people to build spec houses, and that's been really hard here in the El Dorado economy since the economic downturn. So, the program, uh, is in place at this time in a partnership between Inc. and the city to fund up to four, uh, spec houses. And we've had the opportunity to look at the, at additional spec housing with these new additions. And so, El Dorado Inc. took up the, um, issue and decided that on their part, they were willing to extend the program to six homes. Um, our financial commitment on this was, um, interest rebate to the, uh, builder, developer, uh, up to a total of ten thousand dollars. The interest rebate would be based on five percent of the building permit up to that, uh, threshold of ten thousand dollars after the home had been on the market for six months. So, if they've held the home longer, their spec home longer than six months, we'll start picking up interest in month seven. It also provided for reimbursement of special assessments of up to a hundred and fifty dollars a month for up to a year. So, the exposure on any given home would have been eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. In the case of the additions that we have right now, they either don't have specials or the specials will not be in place in the eighteen-month period. So, El Dorado Inc. was looking at, we had a commitment for twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars. This proposal would expose us to a commitment of thirty thousand. Um, the city commission passed their commitment of twenty-three six, uh, around the same time, I think it was April. Uh, and so, the request was, would the city agree to do a match up to thirty thousand rather than the twenty-three six? And remember, we only pay if the home doesn't sell after being on the market for six months, and we reimburse on a monthly basis.
And that, but that started April of thirteen, didn't it? It didn't start this April, did it?
No, not this April of thirteen.
April of thirteen.
April of thirteen. So.
And so far.
And so far, we've had, there's been no.
Payout.
Cost at all.
No cost at this time. We do have one home that's completed right now that's in the six-month window. Uh, the first house that we approved did sell already. It sold, it was sold before it was completed. So, we're hopeful that the spec houses do sell, you know, very timely. And there's an opportunity we might have to, to pay. But, um, a neighboring community did this a number of years ago, and in the whole program, they only paid one time.
And was that Newton?
That was Newton.
So, that's what Newton does.
They don't have the program in place now, I don't think, but they were trying to do the same thing, disperse some spec housing development.
So, if, if, if we voted to go to thirty, are there applications pending?
Yes, there are.
And then, we'd be full up again?
Yes, we would be.
And I think I asked last time, that are, and none of the applications are for, uh, the farmer's new addition, correct?
None at this time. We have, um, one of the applicants that has backed out. So, if we do this, um, extension of up to thirty thousand apiece at this time, we could accommodate an application for farmer's addition.
Oh, good.
Just without having to go more.
Sounds good.
There was five on the list, if one of them went out, was it one of them that had two of them?
There was already, but there was already one in the program.
There was already one in the program. We had five new applications, and we had one that was already in the program.
Oh, okay.
Well, if this is helping in any way, I'm for it.
And, and just, just to, to clarify, while, if we move forward with this piece today, it bumps us up to six, it, um, so there's still that spot open for the farmer's addition. But it, that, that doesn't mean that it's reserved for that, that development, right? I mean, so, if there's another section of town that has project.
We're selling.
These spec homes, the, and it meets the criteria of this program, I, I encourage people to take advantage of it.
Um, of the applications we had on the list, three were in new subdivisions, two were in existing subdivisions.
Right.
Somebody goes out and builds a new house today, what does the city of El Dorado do for them? I mean, you know, this is gonna be part of it.
I'll let you speak to that, Scott.
So, are, are you talking new subdivisions?
We're talking our new developments. You know, what's the taxpayer putting this thing at this point? An example would be water line, sewer line, storm sewer. We're gonna pay ten thousand dollars interest if the place don't sell. Eighteen hundred dollars in specials if it don't sell.
The city of El Dorado, um, for all customers, as far back as, as we can tell, has extended water mains at no cost to the development or the customer.
Right.
Water mains?
Water mains, so they.
Not distribution systems.
Right. And then, sanitary sewer is the sole responsibility of the development or the customer. So, they, they're, they bear those costs to extend sewer mains to serve their property. And typically, that's done over, um, temporary notes for a period, which they pay the interest on those temporary notes. And then, it'll go to long-term bonding, which, again, they're responsible for the interest payments on that. Storm water, the city of El Dorado, along with every other development we have records on, has paid for the storm water. So, any of the inlets you see on streets and need the underground infrastructure that carry the storm water runoff away, the city of El Dorado at large pays for those improvements.
And always has.
And always has. As far as streets, a standard residential street, the development and the development pays for all of those costs involved in the street. The city does step in. If there's an intersection involved in the project, we will pay the cost of the intersection.
And a non-standard street?
And a non-standard street, something that, in, 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 a non-standard street can, wider, needs to be more structurally sound, gonna carry heavy commercial traffic. That's the same case with sanitary sewers. If the city's planning ahead of time, sees future growth, and say, we need to put in a twelve-inch sewer main, but the residential subdivision only requires an eight-inch, we will pay for that increased cost in that diameter of that pipe.
And then, does El Dorado Inc. still like it, somebody moves to town that works at one of the businesses, still do that five thousand, ten thousand dollar deal?
We don't.
We don't do that anymore?
No.
Really, when you, when you look at it, a new home and a new subdivision, when they're starting to pay those specials, are ranging anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars per month on top of the cost of their home.
Just in specials.
Just in special. Just in specials.
And that's not including if you have two streets, is it?
Yeah, and that's not including if you have two streets, there are some subdivisions out west that are, have specials higher than that and that's. Significant cost, so that's why these programs like this and, and the NRP. You know, can at least help get something kickstarted and going, because it is significant and it's. And we've changed our specifications in some manners over the years to reduce the infrastructure cost. But still give us a serviceable road and water mains and sewer lines, try to reduce that cost.
So the special on the new lot is gonna be the street and what else?
In the sanitary sewer.
In the sewer, okay. I know, I know one thing from the banking standpoint, spec housing is just something that examiners don't like whatsoever. So there's, there's risk in it, you know, what goes on with that, so. We've, we've committed to four lots. Is what we've done, do we have that in writing somewhere, is there a time that that's off? At what point, at what point do we say this, we don't do this anymore? I'm thinking, shouldn't we have that put to writing exactly what the commitment is and so everybody understands to what date and how many and?
Well, there wasn't a date, you committed X amount of dollars to the program.
Right.
And there wasn't a sunset on it. I mean, we pulled the minutes, I think, I've read them, I haven't read them lately.
I. So in thirteen, we committed $23,600 to the program. The money is set aside in, in case it's needed and it hasn't been needed yet.
And I assume at any time, the program can be canceled if.
As long as there's, as long as there's no houses in the.
In the, probably in the midst of it, yeah.
But we can't have a guy walk in, say, I wanna do it, and we say, well, we've canceled the program too, we have to be careful of that, just so everybody knows how the games play.
We can come in and, and we can say all our funds are committed and.
You know, one thing that crosses my mind, and this is just me. We do matching funds with El Dorado Inc., so when we look at this project, we've already matched with them going in and then we're coming back saying, well, would you match us on that? So technically, the city's paying three-fourths of that. And private individuals are paying a fourth, would, would you say that's possible, Lynda?
Couldn't, you could look at it and it could be possible.
Okay. I. You know, we've committed to four and if El Dorado Inc. wants to do two more, I'd say, parrot him, because we gave him, we've already matched money to help with that. That's, that's kind of my feeling and we stick with the four and stick to what we said and. I, I.
And do you think that's kinda?
I don't want to be looking down with a bunch of spec housing out there.
And do you think that's kind of like what the college is telling you about NRP? They're gonna get the benefit from our expense and so you're asking Inc. to have the expense and we get the benefit.
Inc.'s for the good of El Dorado. Is that true?
I'm just saying it seems to me like it's exactly the same.
Well, we're all in the same pot on that deal, the other way, we're not all in the same pot, tax-wise.
I, I, I see where you're coming from and I guess I'm just, with this being such housing and the constant issue, I'm not. If we were coming, talking about matching funds or additional funds for something a little bit different, I might probably feel more. Along the same line, but I just, with this situation, if it can help keep progress going in any way, then I'm not opposed to it.
And I think it's a relatively small amount of money.
If we committed, if we committed to four and those four start and build out there, hopefully that's gonna kick and you'll be replacing. So it isn't like we're telling the guys, no, we'll just have a waiting list on that process if they want to wait.
They wanna wait.
Well, then they go out and build the house. Maybe it's good enough where they don't need the, the backup to go with that.
Well, we've talked about tonight and we've talked about in the past and especially you, mayor, have talked about. The shortage of housing we have, well, here's a program that I would think that would be right up your alley.
It is.
And. For a relatively small amount of money that we may not even pay. With any luck at all, we won't even, we're not gonna come out of pocket, we haven't paid yet. I guess I, I don't understand the reluctance.
Well. Commissioner Badway, I was around when, when we had the. The lots out west of town and I know there's another auction coming up this week, probably some more lots gonna be going out on that. And I know how these things can start and I know how they can end.
We're not talking about lots, we're talking about spec houses.
Okay, so I am saying that. And in banking, I know how hard it is for some developers to sell houses. In some markets. I, I've been around and I know how bank examiners look at banks on spec houses.
Well, they didn't used to.
Well, they do now.
Well.
So there's, there's some risk in that.
They didn't used to.
And I, I just think that we've set four and I'd be happy with four and let the program go that way. That's where I'm coming from, I don't think just because we got more apps, we just give it to everybody. I think we set a plan, the plan's working, we got people applying and. We do four and if, if El Dorado Inc. feels the, the need to do six or eight or 10, it isn't that much money, because you've got half million dollars. This would be a good place to spend it. If, if the group feels that way, if it's that important. I think the taxpayers have put a lot into this already.
Well, I, I mean, I would say that, understanding the program, understanding. The, the need that we have for more housing in El Dorado. That I'm absolutely in favor of adding $6,400 to our, to our side of the pot to. To help move this along and I think this is, again, this is an opportunity. Whether there's four or six, it's opportunities that, that are not limited to. New development, whether it's Farmers or Chris Ninth or, you know, or, or new lots north, there, this, these are opportunities that are available throughout town. So again, I'd like to encourage anyone that's, that's got that desire to. To take advantage of, of the spec housing program and, and to get with Lynda, to get with Scott and talk about the specs that. The specifications that, that we set up in our housing committee to. To qualify for the program.
I might clarify too, we're asking you if you decide to do this, not to approve a number of homes. To approve the $30,000.
Sixty-four hundred dollar difference for us.
Because we might have applications at some point that would have special assessments that would come into play and then. We would have to adjust accordingly. You know, based on our exposure at that time.
You know, whenever the city subsidizes things like this, we gotta be very careful because there's other people in town. That maybe is trying to sell their house at the same time. So you have options of saying, I need to sell my house. And you got this one over here that we've been helping with this. And you kind of get into a thing that people say, well, why would I wanna go buy your house, I'll just go build a new one. And, you know, you, we've seen houses out in the northeast part of town that's been very slow selling. And if, if that housing problem's an issue, those shouldn't have been setting for as long as they said.
But the program is for spec housing, if someone decides to go build a new home on their own, they don't, they aren't eligible.
Yeah, that doesn't count.
I understand that, I'm saying subsidy though, is what I'm saying. And when you're subsidizing one end, you're kind of hurting the guy that's trying to sell his house or the realtors on the other side.
Well, in this program, the house that pulled that note, while it may not impact the example you're giving. I guess I think what we've seen is if you price your house right, it'll sell in El Dorado. Now, the other part. That. Kind of your second point. I lost my train of thought. Tell me your second point again, mayor, and I'll tell you what I was thinking.
About houses trying to sell?
There was houses trying to sell and there was one other point you made about this. And I can't remember now what I was thinking, sorry.
Subsidies are trying to. You're, you're subsidizing one area and not letting free enterprise work on the whole thing? Hi, this kind of, this kind of program, have you seen anywhere in Kansas?
Newton, Kansas, did it?
We got this directly from Newton.
We got it from Newton.
Okay, I was wondering.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we increase the committed funds for the spec housing program from 23,600 to 30,000 in order to assist El Dorado Inc.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Motion carries three to one. Okay.
It's been doing this.
Let's get some music here, Scott.
We got cold, hot, cold.
Agenda item number five, update on Tawanda Avenue, we're gonna get positive on something.
I just give you all a quick, brief update on, on where Tawanda Avenue is. Had review of our plans with our consultant on the project last week. Where what we would officially call sixty percent plans, I, I would call them more like ninety percent complete, really ready to go. Started communicating with the utility companies on relocation. Fortunately, there isn't a lot of utilities to be relocated with the project. But have yet to get with them, we have some gas service lines and some water service lines that will need some adjustments, some minor things. So far, it's looking like after these plans are this far along, that we're on budget within what was approved. I was a little worried about that after reducing the. The project around and then talking to construction companies and getting different price quotes early on. It had me a little concerned, but we're still look like we're within our authorized amount on that, on that end. Looking at a way to get pedestrians safely across Constant Creek was something we really wanted to concentrate on. Without having to incur the expense of. Basically widening, making that box culvert wider than it is. We were able to do that by narrowing the section of the roadway. Basically from a 41-foot wide road and down to a 36-foot wide road across the bridge. And then, and then taper on back out, which will, will really give a nice flow of traffic, look good and accommodate a, a six-foot. Pedestrian path on the north side of the, the box culvert. Drainage was a big thing to look at, that was something MK Sierra consultant on the project spent a lot of time on. And specifically what we, our goal was to take a 10-year storm event. And make sure that we would accommodate two eight-foot lanes of traffic, eight-foot wide, going each direction in a 10-year event. That we'd be able to keep that open. Able to accomplish that for a majority of the road, it's a little, gets a little more difficult down at Grand Park. The drainage spacing for that Grand Park area is quite large. In fact, it goes all the way from Sixth Avenue on east to Denver Street, so a good section of town. Some of that is in underground piping, some of that's on the surface of the roads. But feel like we're gonna be able to accomplish that feat, so that's good, there are always gonna be a lot of storm sewer structures down, down there at that Grand Park area. And, and it's looking pretty possible that we'll have to go into some of the improved section of Tawanda. East of Grand Park and add some inlet structures, just to help to get that water way quicker and off that road. But on track for January letting, thinking we're gonna advertise for a couple of weeks. And then bring it in front of you all for approval. And then through the contract process, be, be out there working into February. Mid-February, so.
Good job.
Do we have any chance, Scott, that it's gonna come in cheaper? And I'm thinking oils went down.
What now?
Oils went down, shouldn't the pricing go down?
What, what we've seen is the asphalt oil prices have not gone down and what we've heard from, heard from those contractors. Little, little different product than, than supply, demand, of course. What I understand, the refineries are trying everything they can do to pump out more gasoline, diesel fuel and asphalt oils are, are becoming less and less abundant. But they do go up and down, we were fortunate last season to get very great prices per ton. Even compared to other communities and discussing it with them of what they're paying per ton per asphalt. So you, you never know. Where we may end up, we will have an advantage bidding early in the season, a lot of those contractors aren't tied up yet. Sometimes on a project this size, the way, the, the longer you wait into the season. They have their oil supplies tied up or committed or they're just so busy with all the contracts that they don't have time to get to us and. And bid higher and add a lot more profit margin in the project. Not as bare-bones, willing to really fight for it.
Any other questions, guy?
No, I'm.
I'm glad it's moving along.
Absolutely. Excited about it.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Ready for agenda item number six, new business discussion items?
I can go, go ahead.
I, first I just wanted to tell everybody happy Thanksgiving, since we won't meet again before Thanksgiving and. I got asked, when does the new dog ordinance start?
It's already begun.
It has already begun?
It began, it began November 30th.
Okay. Okay.
So it is underway, they can contact the animal shelter for an application.
Okay. Okay, very good. And, and I was able to attend the Bradford Library Sloppy Joe Benefit, they were very good, the desserts were very good. Wasn't able to stay for the dessert auction, because I had to go help my daughter pack to move, but. I hope that stuff went high, because it looked awful good. And that's all I got.
I can go real quick, I, I don't know what happened with the ice situation, but I think Herb, you said you were gonna mention it. Maybe in new biz or your manager's report. And then real quickly, I just wanted to give a congratulations to the high school on their fall production with Katie Banks. And say thank you to the community on behalf of her for coming out and supporting that and filling the auditorium, I know I saw a lot of city staff and department heads who were there. And I, I appreciate you all supporting them, but with that, I also wanted to just make comment. I've kind of been lucky enough in the past year to spend some more time in our schools here at USD 490. And going with this whole housing program and getting people to. Find the homes here in El Dorado, I think it's important to mention that we have some really good, good things happening, I think, in our school district. And we should be proud of that and, and I think, I encourage people to keep your kids in, in El Dorado. Because I think things are going really well and things are constantly improving. But some really special things that I've just kind of seen happen throughout all the different schools and, and programs, so I know kids started. Practices for winter athletics, so a lot of games and swim meets and all that will be happening, so I just encourage folks to get out and. Support our students this winter and that's all I got.
And, and it's important that we tell our story or it won't get told.
Absolutely.
And we don't need other people telling our story and so, I mean, I think it's, you know, isn't Katie the one that was on Broadway?
Yeah, and she's one of those. Yeah, and she's one of those awesome stories, coming back home and, and doing what she does. But I, but I think, you know, I don't like to give it too much credit, but people criticize sometimes our school district, as all school districts get criticized. But I think it's important to note, there's a lot of really good things happening with our students and some of our leadership. And, and we should be proud of that. And I just encourage folks, every opportunity you have, to get out and support those kids. 'Cause that helps build community pride and it helps our teachers. They could use all the support they can get, 'cause I have a whole new respect form after the past week and what they deal with. But they, uh, we have really good things happening. So, I would encourage folks to do everything you can to keep, keep Eldorado kids in the Eldorado School District.
When you, if you want your child to be taught theater by a Broadway professional, then you need to be in USD four ninety.
Absolutely.
If you want your child to go to national debate tournaments, then you need to bring your child to USD four ninety.
Well, it looks like we're gonna have a good basketball season too, so fingers crossed. That's all I got.
Um, I just have a couple of quick things. Herb, have you had an opportunity to see if you can figure out a time for a work session to, for all of us to discuss the conferency plan and kind of do that review?
Yeah, I think, um, I, I was thinking probably like February, early February. And get us through the holidays, um, give us January to recover from the holidays, and then, and I say that there's actually a lot of annual things the city does in February too. But I think that that's kinda what I'm thinking, that, uh, the Wednesday after the, your first Monday meeting.
Okay. You know, we had an opportunity at the beginning of tonight's meeting to, um, meet some of the employees and, and that were presented with these service awards. I just wanted to comment on that. I think that it, every year, that's one of my, one of the things, one of the many things that I look forward to um, as a commissioner, and that's getting to see these service awards and, and really understand the longevity and the types of employees that we have. Um, the type of work environment that we create for them. The, the, that we help create here, but, but that is driven by staff, department heads, and Herb. Um, we've got a lot of really tenured employees in Eldorado, which means a lot of knowledge, um, a lot of history. And, and it gives us an opportunity to really accomplish some, some great things in Eldorado. So, I just wanna congratulate all the employees and, and especially those five that were here tonight to receive their service awards. But wanted to take a quick second to say thank you to all the employees for the hard work that they do. As we are moving into Thanksgiving and, and Christmas time, what are the schedules, the city's schedules? Can you guys give us an update on kind of how that's gonna work moving forward?
Sure. Um, we, uh, take, we're closed two days at Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday. We are closed one day at, at Christmas on Christmas, and that's by, um, code. That you create those holidays, adopt those holidays, and Christmas is a holiday. Historically, I've let people go home early on Christmas Eve that would usually start staggering out early. And we usually don't shorten our hours, but we usually do. Senior staff stays and keeps the place open, and we let our, uh, uh, other staff go home.
So, Christmas Day is the holiday?
Yes, sir.
And this year, Christmas is?
Thursday.
On a Thursday. So, what's Friday gonna be?
In the past, since I've been here, uh, there, the, the commission has usually made that a holiday as well. And so, um, that'll be up to the commission. And then, you also, I think, have always canceled your first meeting in January, because it's usually the first or second. Um, and then, you have canceled your last meeting in December often as well. And so, um, so those are two other things that come up this time of year.
So, i- if we want to have the discussion about the Friday after Christmas, now's the time to do that, or?
I mean, you actually have probably forty days.
Well, we'll have one, we'll have at least one meeting in December.
Yes, you'll have, you'll have at least one meeting in December.
I mean, I think you guys are setting over Christmas Eve. I think it would be appropriate for Friday, especially with Christmas being on a Thursday.
Right.
And people tend to travel. I mean, that would make sense, so I, I'm in favor of.
And then, we close, and we're closed New Year's Day as well.
Sure. Well, I'm in favor of that Friday being a, being a holiday. I mean, I know that s- schools, you know, it's, that's the time that we, like you said, there's travel and I, I think a lot of, a lot of businesses, not, not all, but a lot of businesses are, are recognizing that as well, so. Our teachers and our service employees, I think, deserve that.
I concur.
So, what about the, if we, if we cancel the second meeting in December, then that's, there's business that we need to make sure we take care of in the first meeting, especially the first meeting in January is canceled as well, so.
And what, and what we've done in the past is, actually, there's been times when it was, the second meeting was the twentieth or the twenty-first, and you didn't meet. If we had to have a meeting, I think it was common too, that you'd have it on the twenty-ninth. Uh, you'd have it right before the end of the year if there was some unforeseen calamity. And I think that, um, and so, even if you decided to not schedule one either, or both of those days, if you had need, would absolutely call you and see about having a special meeting. And I think, um, you have special meetings all the time.
I mean, I'd like for us to, I'd like to have that discussion now and to plan on, plan on not having that second meeting in December. And if we need one, get something scheduled. But as I look at my calendar, I think I might be out of town that day anyway, so. What's your guys' thought?
On meetings? I mean, I think let's tentatively plan on canceling like we have, and if something's pressing or we need to have a meeting, we'll have a meeting. Is my thought. Just stick to kinda what we've done, but if we need to, let's make it happen.
I think it's agenda-driven. If we need something, we have it. If we don't, we don't.
I think that's, I think that's, uh, all I've got. Happy Thanksgiving next week to everyone, and safe travels.
Everybody talked about what I was gonna talk about. I, uh, went to the library. I concur with what Nick said. I had a great deal, and I, I think I showed up when you left, Nick, so.
So, so did you buy all the desserts?
Well, I was gonna say, I bought my share. But, uh, it, I thought.
They look good. No early sales either, I asked.
Yeah. The other thing, I was at a, a library board meeting, and we can all in Eldorado be proud of our board members and how hard they've been working on their program. And if you guys, anybody in town has some time to go down and look and kinda see what the plans are, they're still in the fundraising phase of that, and they've been working hard at that. So, I know they'd appreciate any help they could get in that area. So, and when it gets done, I think it's gonna be something that we'll all be very proud of, so.
Agreed.
I wanted to spend a second on, when we bought the home lumber company, uh, I wanted to ask Herb, did we get a survey on that? 'Cause I noticed the legal description says the east half of lot six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I was looking at that building, and that building's connected to another building. Did, what, what kinda thing did we work out on the way those two tie together? And who's, where, where's the property line at, I guess, is what I'm questioning.
And I don't, I don't remember that, Scott, do you?
The connection is severed currently. There, there is no, there used to be. That wall's been blocked up and, um, with concrete blocks, so there's no longer an opening between the buildings.
Okay. Do we know, I, I get kinda nervous on things when they get that close, and you say the east half.
Or the.
I don't wanna wake up and find out the east half is three foot into our stem wall or something, you know, that's why.
The east ha- I mean, the legal description you're looking at is probably, uh, does it say original town Eldorado? So, you've got, you've got tiny lots and, and, and.
It's what the deed said.
The deeds, um, they get quite cumbersome in the, those core areas of town, 'cause they laid areas out, thinking of certain development that didn't occur, and then you've got a lumber building that takes up a whole block. So, would have a lot of lots and say maybe the east half of block nineteen or whatever it may be.
Yeah.
And, and I guess to your point, as a general, we always do surveys.
Yeah.
I can't remember on this one, but Scott, you can go out and set the corners and.
Well, I, I wanna say maybe the corners are set, and you have the alley that's pretty darn established there on the, the east side. And the west side, you have a.
It wouldn't be a bad thing to check into, just to see where the buildings are located.
Yep, we can do it.
The other thing, when I go around that thing and looked at it real careful, uh, I was around when they had the fire downtown. And I remember that stone wall on the north end of that hole down there was a big deal about having a structural engineer that they was worried about, uh, how you not have any problems with that. And it, as I drive down that, uh, alley, it seemed like there might be some mold that's showing up on there. And I just wondered if we had a structural engineer look at that building, especially on the north end towards the bottom. I don't wanna get any big-time surprises there.
We, uh, we did. We had one from Wichita walk through the building with us.
A structural engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, Didn't say anything that really concerned him. We didn't have to do an official report or anything.
Okay.
But our building official has walked through the building multiple times as well.
I'm worried about the outside, 'cause I haven't been inside. I'm saying the outside on the east.
Yeah, and, and those cracks where maybe the facade's pulling a little bit away from the block.
Yeah.
I mean, he's looked at all those. Those are just typical wall issues with the structure of that age. Needs a little tuck pointing and, and that sort of thing. But we've discussed it.
The other thing, Herb, in your deal, you was talking about, uh, the community market, says we're working on plans for remodeling the office, restroom, and budget a- and kitchen. Is that in the budget? I mean, did we?
You, there, there's a project that has a few thousand dollars in it. What we have are, we're gonna apply for a grant for the kitchen, and so, we're gonna ask for money from other people.
Okay, so you're saying grant money's gonna pay for that?
Yes, sir. You're, the, the short answer is, I wanna say five thousand, six thousand left in that project fund. But other than that, not, there's not enough money to do all that work on our dime.
Okay. All right, I just, a few questions I had on that.
I think, um, I think the grant we're asking for is, one's a hundred thousand and one's.
Who from?
United States of America.
Okay.
And I can't remember where the other one. There was another one we were talking about that I thought was in.
Apartment bag or?
Well, that's the one I'm thinking of, but there's another one not, seems to me like there's a not-for-profit out there that we were gonna ask for thirty thousand for or some.
I was, I was a little concerned too, when I was reading, it says, "We are also beginning conversation with Butler about ring of space for their restaurant classes." And I would say that I would be careful about, I don't see where the city gets involved. I think private enterprise, that, if, if we're gonna do that kinda stuff, then somebody needs to have that. I don't wanna see us getting off into other areas, what I'm saying. I, I was, uh, fortunate enough to go around, somebody's coming to town, looking at some properties, making a decision. And, and we've got a lot of commercial properties for sale around town.
And I think.
And I hate for the city to get involved and then have somebody that's gonna rent, and we're kinda, it comes in that subsidy stuff, and I this is a community market, and I don't wanna see us getting into a whole bunch of other things besides community market. Now, that's just my opinion.
No, and I think, um, our interest is if we get a grant to build a commercial kitchen, if the college had an interest in using it during the day, we'd have a conversation about that during. But it couldn't interfere with what we're doing. Currently, the Butler County, Butler Community College is renting from the city of Wichita. So, um, I guess we kinda thought maybe we could bring them back to the county that they're named after.
Well, surely there's some other place in town they could get to.
There, there hasn't been. When, when they moved to Wichita, they tried to stay in Eldorado.
Yeah. So, you're thinking the community market building would be an option for them?
I think it could be. I, I don't know enough about what they want, but if we build a commercial kitchen, that sounds like something you'd have in a restaurant.
Does, does most community marketplaces have a commercial kitchen?
I haven't, I can't answer that.
I, I don't know either. I just.
I, I think, I, I agree with kinda your thought process. I mean, if we were to get a grant for something like that, I mean, I'm saying that just makes the facility that much more valuable. And, and I'm not opposed to exploring that kinda stuff, if it doesn't interfere with our original mission in having that building. I mean, whatever we can do to utilize it to the max and make it a good deal. But, but I, I mean, so I agree with you, Mike. But I, that'll be, you know, I think that'll just be kinda interesting to see what opportunities come after we solidify the mission and get it going. And then, if there's open time or opportunity to fill some of that stuff, then why not explore it?
That's all the questions I had. Herb?
Yes, sir. Um, I wanted to let everyone know that, um, so far, we have no registered pit bulls in Eldorado. So, kinda to reinforce the discussion you had when you vetted all that. The, the people who wanna be regulated will be regulated, and the people who don't won't. And so, uh, so far, there are none, like they were before you didn't, before you allowed them. Wanna talk a little bit about snow removal. It, the, this event, um, we had a little bit of internal confusion, but that said, we normally don't get out until you have two inches. So, w- we got out at two inches, which is about all we got. And so, by that time, um, it's Sunday at eleven, and cars have already been on it and a lot of compaction. So, the reason we have these racetracks right now was because of our normal process. Now, normally, we pre-treat all of our primaries and secondaries. This time, we just pre-treated bridges, and so, that was an internal mistake, um, that we won't make anymore. And I just attribute it to first snow of the year, and hopefully, we won't make that again. But, no, it's, I was not as happy as I like to be about how our streets work. They, they were slick. I mean, this morning, coming to work, I got a slide and I had a Jeep. So, I've heard, we've got lots of calls, there are a lot of, a lot of, I think people have gotten used to having really good streets cleared off, and, and that's our expectation as well. And so, um, we'll, we'll do better.
Thank you.
And that's, and that's all I had there.
I was sitting there thinking too, Herb, when we had this deal that Bill's talking about, could we consider having that like on a Saturday morning, guys? Or in the evening? And what I'm thinking, if you do a Wednesday at four o'clock, this thing's gonna take a little bit of time.
Sure.
And, you know, by the time you work all day, and then you come in here and try to put your thought process on.
I'm not opposed to that with this.
If we try, Saturday morning, we can. If we try, Saturday morning, we can, we'll wake up and kind of.
And I don't, yeah.
Just focus on that.
I think, Mary, you won't get it done in two or three hours.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I think it's, I think kind of what we discussed, I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I think what we kind of discussed was really a full-blown retreat to, to fully review and vet the conferency plan so that everyone has a good understanding of what it entails.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll get that.
Anything else? If not, entertain a motion.
I moved with adjourned.
Second.
Got a motion and second and discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, four zero. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.